Please rise for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings and welcome. We'll go right into number three visitors and we'll start with Carlene. She says, okay.
Good evening. I'm a registered nurse at Virgens Residential Care, Barbara Westy, and Tim Wester are the owners and Barbara's the full-time nurse there. So they're in attendance with this as well. You all have a copy of the letter dated August eighth? And have you had a chance to read it? We have a resident at Virgens Residential Care that is a longtime resident of Virgens, who has a, an outstanding balance with the pharmacy that we get our prescriptions from for all of our residents. The outstanding balance is, represents the co-pay not covered by the insurance coverages he has. And I noted here that his monthly income is seven hundred and forty-two dollars. His board to Virgens Residential Care is six hundred and sixty dollars. And the balance due for room and board comes from the Medicaid program. We're here tonight to ask, as I understand it, the city of Virgens has a fund available to assist indigent residents. And we're here tonight to ask for a one-time withdrawal from that fund to go directly to the pharmacy of five hundred ten dollars and twenty-four cents to clear the outstanding balance. And the reason we're asking for this is that this pharmacy has said to us that as of August eighth, they will no longer issue medications to this resident. Now, I know August eighth has gone by, what happens is we get a month cycle of medications. So as of August eighth, they gave us enough for the next month, which means by September, we won't have any. Do you have any questions?
First off, before we do that, I'm gonna ask either Mel and Joan to explain where that, Mel, you wanna do that?
Sure. We did copy your letter, Carlene, to everyone, and on the backside of their letter is actually a, a copy of a letter that came in from George Lucy, who was the lawyer settling the estate of Francis T. Blaney. The letter's dated August thirteenth, nineteen forty-three. It's funny, we can't retrieve things that came in last week, but for some reason, we can retrieve this here very easily. Anyway, the, what it is, is Francis T. Blaney in, in that will said that to the city of Virgens, Vermont, the sum of five thousand dollars, the income thereof, only to be used for the care of the worthy poor of said city, the bequest to be in memory of Mr. and Mrs. John H. Donnelly. You know, for, probably for three or four decades, if not five, it was called the Blaney Fund. And Joan and I happened to catch that one day, that really it's not the Blaney Fund. It was left in the name of John H. Donnelly, and so that's why today we call it the Donnelly Fund. Just to give you a little bit of history on the, the Donnelly Fund, obviously that five thousand dollars has been invested, you know, for years and years, and the interest, in essence, only the interest is available. And there hasn't been a ton of activity on that fund. You know, Joan and I have talked a little bit about what has it been used for in the past, and there was a time when a portion of the earnings was used for the Chittenden Bank mitten tree. If some of you remember, there used to be a Christmas tree down in the Chittenden Bank, where some mittens would be either donated or purchased for, for youngsters. Also, on occasion, we would be called by a schoolteacher about a student that didn't have a winter coat and, or didn't have boots for winter. And they were from a needy family, and we would have an account set up at Fishman's Department Store, and a coat would get purchased for the, for the youngster or boots, and the bill would come to City Hall, and we would pay that. There really hasn't been much other activity in that account for years. Quite a while ago, we, we didn't, I don't think we found it, Joan, but there was a time, twenty years ago, whereby, instead of having the city council dealing with these kinds of requests, it was felt that they might be better handled, or more efficiently handled, or more consistently handled by the town service officer. Joan Devine, and it's, she is the appointed town service officer, and it's not because she's the clerk. They aren't necessarily connected. But in essence, the town service officer acts to some degree like the welfare office when the welfare office closes, right, Joan? There is some responsibility there. So there was a, a motion passed by the city council, like I say, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, whereby up to five hundred dollars a year would be allocated to the town service officer for use, up to five hundred dollars a year, for the purposes as outlined in this, outlined in this will. So that's, you know, the, the old policy. I mean, I don't, I don't know that anybody on the board knew about that. I mentioned to Mike, he wasn't, he wasn't aware that there was that motion made. But that's, that is, has been the longstanding policy. So, you know, to me, I think that what the question before the city council is, is whether or not, you know, whether that, that, whether or not that policy should continue to exist and have these kinds of things handled by the town service officer. Cause one of the things that the town service officer can, can handle that the city council in some open meeting is difficult, is be, is about who is it? What are their, what are their financial capabilities? We, we don't typically have that information shared, you know, in a, in public session. So obviously, having these kinds of requests go through a town service officer outside of a meeting, it's, it's really better handled, better handled that way. So, so I, I think, Mike, the, the, and obviously the request is for, for over five hundred dollars. I don't, I don't know that ten dollars and twelve cents is gonna get in the way of anything here. But, but, but anyway, I think that's the, that might be the first decision that the city council might wanna take in this regard.
Just a quick question, is, is five hundred still adequate, or should it be upped a little bit?
It's, it's totally your call, I, I, you know.
We just don't know what the interest is.
Well, I can, we can tell you how much money we have.
I can give you a financial rundown. Right now, this fund has eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-nine cents. That's as of June, July twenty-ninth. Of that amount, five thousand cannot be spent. And we have it invested, you know, funds invested at seven and a half percent and six point one percent. These are long-term investments, cause you can't spend five of it. And the other, we've invested it longer because the use hasn't been there.
Cause I'm just thinking, five hundred dollars isn't really using much if there's a hard time.
Joe?
I was just gonna propose a motion that we.
You're on the, it's your turn, make a motion if you want.
I'd like to make a motion that we honor this request for five hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll take, I have a motion, can I have a second, then we'll take further discussion? Uh, C. A. Second, C. A. Do you have something?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if we're in a long term, you know, with the, how do we take the money out without being penalized?
I, I can cash it out. And like, if I had cashed one of my most recent investments, I would've lost a dime if I'd cashed it the other day. It all goes by what its market value is worth. At the time, you need to cash it out, what your loss is gonna be.
Randy?
I, I, instead of acting on this, I think we should act on the original motion, which is having the service representative.
We can satisfy both needs, I mean.
Tonight, they came in for us, yeah.
They, they came in and we can address that, but then we can go back for a second motion. So, we can, we can take care of both, and as long as they brought up the motion first, if I'd taken, rather than go through denying it and then just telling so. Let's, I'll move to the, the question. All those in favor of passing the motion to pay five hundred and ten dollars and whatever number of cents? Say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Then I'll take the motion, Randy?
I'd like to make a motion that we have Joan as service.
Officer?
Service officer, handle the such requests out of due of privacy.
Do you wanna set a limit? Should we set a limit?
If Joan, if Joan is gonna be in charge of this, maybe some, when something sometime does come up and she's not sure how she feel to do about this, you know, then she should have that be able to come back to us or ask somebody, get somebody else involved. You know, sometimes somebody might say, I want twelve hundred for this and that, you know, because of this. Does she have that authority to do that?
Well, that's what Randy is, I think Randy is trying to motion. I should get a second on his motion, is, anybody wanna give?
He hasn't finished yet.
I was trying, I was trying.
Come on now.
Go ahead and hit me. Be interesting tonight. Uh, to make a motion that Joan as service.
Officer.
Officer. Hand, the service officer handle all these requests due to privacy issues. And that she can come to the council if she does not feel comfortable with the amount of dollars requested.
Do you feel all right with that, Joan?
Yeah, I feel okay with that.
All right.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a second. Any other further discussion?
I think that, I personally feel like that, I, I mean, I agree with what Lowell's saying, but I think it's a little open-ended. I think we oughta set a dollar amount, somebody comes in and asks for ten thousand dollars, I mean, how are we gonna?
Withdraw my motion.
Pardon me?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and you can.
I, I, I'm not sure what that limit should be, but I, I kinda, I kinda feel like, I mean, I, I agree with Randy's motion and everything, but I, I think we oughta set a yearly maximum for requests. I don't know what that, personally, I don't know what that should be.
Yeah, one, one thing, Joe, I, you know, we can't remember how long ago, so obviously, we, we can't remember what the balance of the fund was at the time. But my guess is at the time, it was probably earning somewhere around five hundred dollars a year. And I think that that's, you know, the, the numbers tried to correspond with one another, that, that in essence, the earnings, you know, let, let's say at that time, there was five thousand doll, the original five thousand dollars. Let's say that the interest had, had earned, had accumulated to five thousand dollars, so there was ten thousand dollars gaining interest. You know, back at that time, it was not uncommon to have five percent CDs, and so probably we were earning about five hundred dollars a year. And so that's what was, that's where the five hundred dollars came. And by allocating only up to five hundred dollars, it allowed the other, you know, you got the original five that can't be touched. And then you got the other five, in the case of some very, you know, larger, a larger emergency. And so it's just, it was just the interest on the ten is what they were dealing with. And so that way, you know, if there was this three thousand dollar need out there, obviously Joan would have to deny the request because it's beyond her authority. So, you know, I, I, you know, you know, I thi, I think you can go either way with it, but I, I'm just telling you, that's what the logic was, was to look at what was the growth.
Is that, is that okay with you, to set a dollar?
I believe that Joan is, has been in this community a long time, and she can determine, you know, if it's, somebody comes in and asks for three thousand dollars, she's gonna think defer to us. But if somebody comes in and asks for six hundred dollars, I don't think it should be denied for that.
Well, I said, whatever made her feel uncomfortable to come back to the board there, so she.
And, and we have to remember, this is for a year's period. This is not just a one person, because you get ten people that come in, and they all need four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, then you've kinda loaned what you've had available and then some. So, and that's not the intent of this.
Well, my personal philosophy is that, you know, these kind of funds are meant to be used, not sit there and gain interest. So I, you know, I certainly am not opposed to using it up. I just, not sure how to be equitable with it.
Yeah, one other thing, I mean, I know they said that this five hundred and ten will take care of it, but, you know, say if there's another incident, same thing, and then about seven months, the same party comes back for more money. I mean, that I would have concerns about.
Well, see, as a town service officer, I have to look at things like, do they have other resources available to them? Like, does this person own a piece of property with life rights somewhere that has some value? Medicare, are, is Medicare picking up anything, or why are they not picking it up? You know, they have V-HAT prescription programs. So those are things I have to look at when someone comes in the door to me. Like, if they come in the door and, you know, they're without housing, it's, why are you without housing? Oh, I'm drinking and beating on my wife. We can't help you. You're without housing because of behavior of your own, you know? We don't, you don't just, everybody's got a need, but is it a need based on circumstance or your own behavior?
Self-infliction.
Right. But as, as a service officer, like I had one person come one time that wanted to borrow money to go to college. And that, that would not be the intent. In my mind, when they say for the worthy poor, we used to have like a poor farm and, you know, and how they had to do away with that because it ended up turning into slavery, and that's when a service officer came in, in the state welfare program, so that people didn't have to be subjected to that. But anyways, that's the type of criteria you gotta go through, and are there any other family members that could help? And, you know, that's what I base decisions on, I have in the past.
Okay, we're back. Randy withdrew his motion.
Another quick question?
Go ahead.
Could you tell us what the interest was this past year?
Cent, this is a, we've switched to this company as of last November, and since last November, it's just over three thousand.
It's come, it's market value, Joe.
November two-ten.
The year bef, you know, the year before, it was four hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents is how much interest was earned on, on the fifteen or so thousand dollars. Obviously, we, you know, it's, we used to commingle all of our money. And when the council adopted a interest allocation formula, to be honest with you, you know, Joan and I forgot that really, we, you know, all of these other funds, Restoration Fund and Land Records Recording, we decided that, that they wouldn't earn interest and only the General Fund would. But the, the Blaney Fund, the Ray Davison Fund, and the Watershed Fund, those have to be held separately. And we had the Watershed and the, and the Davison Fund in separate instruments. This one didn't, so that, so it wasn't that long ago that Joan purchased these instruments for that specific fund. So as, as Joan said, there's really, there's, there's, in this fund, the way that Joan's got it structured, there's three instruments and a little bit of cash. There's a five thousand dollar CD, and a ten thousand dollar CD, and a one thousand dollar CD, and some cash. And the way these instruments work, they actually have a market value. Frankly, we don't really care because we're not, we're not trading them like stocks. We, we just care about the, the, the rate. And those holdings that she has, as she mentioned, one of them has, is at seven and some change, right, Joan? The other one is at six and some change. So they're very good, they're long-term utility bonds is what they are, they're municipal utility bonds. So they, they are good, they have very high earnings compared to regular, regular CDs. So, so if the, if the melded rate is, is six and a half percent on eighteen, on, on eighteen thousand dollars, I mean, it, it earns a grand a year.
Yeah, this, this, that I was saying, the thirty-three, like Mel said, it's market value, that's how they report, our, all of ours. It's like, if I were to cash it in today, that's what I would get. But we don't cash them in, and then we're guaranteed the rate we've got them invested in for that period of time.
Clear? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would like, if Randy doesn't wanna to go ahead and re-issue his, I would like to do it in the same verbiage he had. I think Joan can be trusted to, to see the funds as she sees fit, so I'd like to make that motion.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? I'll let Joan catch up?
I'm all set.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Good, did you have something you wanted?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Joan, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow.
In the morning, yeah, that'll be fine.
Have an enjoyable evening. Next visitors are Jeff and Carrie Cart. Give you the floor.
Thanks for having us up today, make sure, and help to get on the agenda. Um, we're here today to discuss the demand letter that was submitted to the, to the city of Alderman, dated on the third, with regards to stormwater damage that we suffered in our residence on eighteen Boma Road, Virgens. Wanted, first of all, make sure everyone got a copy of that, it was kind of a big document, but did everyone receive that? So just a, a, a quick recap on that, there was two incidents, one in April and one in May, where there was a rainfall. And the city storm water system appeared to back up a number of houses, basements in our, in our development. This is pretty much on the southern end, or the, not the southern end, but the lowest end of the Crosby Farms subdivision. On the first incident, there was roughly nine houses that had flooding that had occurred. And then on the subsequent flooding, there was, we had, we had heard about six to seven houses that were flooded as well. So with regards to our demand letter, we did suffer a fairly substantial loss related to our basement, which had just been finished about two years prior. As part of the, the process working with Mel, we did ask if we could get, have some type of assessment done on the stormwater system because obviously having two of these events in a month's time, with the amount of damage that we suffered and the number of neighbors that also had damage that they had suffered as well, we knew it was gonna be an issue going forward as well. So we had asked that someone do an assessment. As part of that process, Mel had asked the Department of Environmental Conservation, Jim Peas, to come in and do an assessment of the stormwater drainage system with regards to the Crosby subdivision. As part of that document, Jim had noted that there was deficiencies in the stormwater drainage system, as well as that there was annual certifications that had not been done for some time. As part of those recommendations, or as part of the document, he had made recommendations, or a number of smaller minor recommendations for things that he had seen. And there was a couple of major recommendations that he had made, and he had also given some insight on some federal grants that would be available to correct these issues. Yep, the city chose to actually pursue that avenue. So, I, you know, I realize we have the demand letter in place, the, the insurance companies are looking at this, so I'm not, we're not really here to talk about the specific damages that we have, more or less what the city's doing to correct the damages or the deficiencies in the design itself, so we don't have to come back here and go, you know, keep having demand letters for, for this going forward. So I wanted to find out whether or not there was any progress on the status of that, on the demand letter itself, and then in terms of the recommendations.
First off, relative to the demand letter, Jeff, as you know, you know, when, when, after this event occurred, you and I talked on the phone, and I encouraged you to send me an email so that I could promptly send that up to the League of Cities and Towns, who carries our, in essence, insurance, it works, it works like insurance. And frankly, the cover letter that I shared with you and shared with members of the board, I, I really do not like the delays that have occurred in this process. You know, I, I just don't think that, and I haven't, and I haven't spoke to anyone at the League's since I sent that letter, but it is a little disturbing to me that people are being left in, in the dark, particularly you, you and Carrie. Cause that, that's not the way the League of Cities and Towns Property and Casualty Fund is supposed to work. I mean, it's, you know, there are some insurance companies out there that, one of their strategies for adjusting claims is to stall and, and do nothing, and, and it is successful sometimes, people just get frustrated and go away. That is not the way VLCT, VLCT Passive works. And I, I do, cause because I did speak to Dan Hardy, I mean, it's my understanding, because I talked to him, that the claim was put into a third-party adjusters. And what I feel bad about is that, that based on emails that you've sent me, you have never been contacted by any representative from VLCT Passive or a third-party contractor like Dan Hardy. And that's, it's very frustrating to me. I don't, I, I was one of the original people that started VLCT Passive, and so it, it hurts personally cause that's not the way, the way it's supposed to work. So, anyway, that claim is there. Let me, relative to, so I will be after them again. I'm really surprised that I didn't get a phone call simultaneous, simultaneous with you getting a phone call. Relative to, relative to the drainage system out there, and I have not contacted Lance Wellen, and the reason why I haven't is because I don't wanna mix, Lance Wellen was the firm that designed the drainage system for Crosby Farms. And what I don't wanna do is mix up this claim. You know, we really don't know how this matter is going to be handled. Because obviously, the city didn't design the system, it was designed by an engineering firm. That engineering firm submitted their plans and obtained a stormwater permit from the state of Vermont. And there were probably more than one contractor involved with constructing the stormwater system out there. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces to this, and I just feel that, you know, you know, Jeff has filed a formal claim. The VLCT should do their investigation and determine liability, whether or not the city has liability or doesn't have liability, or has limited liability, and whether or not other engineering firms and contractors have liability. We don't know that, and we aren't gonna know that until they, until they complete their investigation and, and take some kind of position that Jeff and Carrie may agree with or not agree with. We just don't have that information. Relative to the, the stormwater system, I, I think, Jeff, that the, the improvements referred to in the Peas' report was actually about lessening the flow out of the detention pond down to Green Street. I think that that's what it was about. There was some reference to some dollars, some funding or whatever, and to be honest with you, I wasn't interested in those dollars and because I felt that it probably meant an enlargement of the detention pond. And that detention pond is on one person's property in, in Crosby Farms. And so I would, I wouldn't pursue funding for any kind of a project in this instance because it's not like the city of Virgens owns a piece of land where that detention pond is, it's actually an easement. So I'm not gonna apply for permits. Even if I agreed, even if I agreed with it on, on somebody's property, the property was for, you know, was for sale. So the timing of, of such a, of an endeavor, which really all it was gonna do was possibly enlarge the pond, possibly deepen the pond, and lessen the amount of flow that would come out of that detention pond onto Green Street, which I really don't think has anything to do with, with, with your events. Basically, just so that you know, when you, when you read through the Jim Peas' report, and, and I think that all of us were surprised to see that, is that the Crosby Farms' development involves a forty-five acre piece of property. And when Jim Peas got to looking at his aerial photos and topographical information, he concluded that the, the storm shed was upwards to eighty acres. That's, that's what I got out of that, Jeff. And so therefore, particularly in a very high rainfall event, going into a system that was designed for, to accommodate forty-five acres, into a set, you know, a very large rainfall event, over eighty acres as opposed to forty-five, going into a drainage system, you know, that, that certainly, you know, is, should be a concern for everybody and a red flag. You know, the other, the other part of this, which I don't know, I'm not an engineer, you know, I don't know, is whether or not the stormwater system was designed to accommodate, you know, foundation drains and. you know, foundation drains and any other drains in the system. I don't know that. And, and I, and again, that's what, you know, we would hope that this whole process of investigation would conclude, because if in fact there's footing drains and sump pumps that are pumping into, into a stormwater system that was intended to drain roads and not footings, you know, that can, that obviously can cause a problem as well. So I see potentially two problems. One is that the storm shed is potentially, at least in Jim's feeling, is far greater than what, what it was originally designed for. And then number two, which Jim Pease's report doesn't speak to, is whether or not footing drains and sump pumps were designed as a part of this system. So we got, we got to get to the, we got to get to the bottom of that.
I'd like to comment on the report about the construction of Christian School, and the effect that that might have had, and I wonder if, if there wasn't a coordination at that point when that was built, and whether or not some kind of alterations could be made to, you know, drainage off of their parking lot or off of the building. Because I, I mean, has this ever happened before? I mean, we certainly had Rainy Springs before, I mean, I know this is a record, but...
Well, there has been some problems in the past relative to the Crosby Court area, and there was, which, which, you know, you have the, you have the two dead-end streets, you know, one of them that comes off of Dell Drive, and the other one that comes off basically right across from your, your house, which dead-ends there. There has been some history of problems in that, that's the Crosby Court, right, Jeff? In the Crosby Court portion? And I know that one of the, you know, one of the remedies was to divert some water from behind the Donnelly House, the Martin Casey House, the Northrup House, and other houses on Buska Court, to get that water to not be running through this development, but to be running down to New Haven Road, you know, more than likely New Haven Road, or, or running over to Green Street. So, because obviously if this, if this system was only designed to, to take on the 45 acres, then obviously something needs to be, that upper 40 acres, if you will, of which 25 acres is the Christian Reformed Church. If that 40 acres, if it wasn't intended to be handled in them, it needs to be diverted elsewhere. So, so I'm going to say that it probably wasn't, you know, obviously, Joe, this, this thing surprised everybody, you know. But I also will say that I do not believe that the Christian Reformed Church, and I say this, but I could be wrong, I don't believe that the Christian Reformed Church was required to get a stormwater permit. And that's because in Vermont, there has to be at least one acre of impervious surface, that's the trigger for a Vermont Agency of Natural Resources stormwater permit. So, you know, they don't have a paved parking lot, you know, I mean, to me it's a little crazy, because Crestone doesn't exactly absorb water to me, but anyway, it's just the way that the regulations are written, and it probably didn't trigger. I could be wrong, I don't, stormwater permits get issued and they go in the land records, but I, my guess is, is that they don't have a stormwater permit, and therefore there wasn't that coordination. So, I can't, I can't really...
There might be some other factors involved that I think too, that people haven't thought about, is people up on Crosby Heights used to have a well at the bottom of the hill, and they pumped their water up to their houses. They have converted over to city water, so they're not consuming any of that water that was in the ground. Plus, I was mentioning to Mel that there's a conduit that comes out, Randy, I think you've mentioned it as well, that comes out, the power pole, or goes up the power pole at the entrance of the new school, and depending on what time of the year it is, they've got holes drilled in the pipe, the conduit, electrical conduit, and you can tell how much water is there in the ground, because it'll take different levels of shooting out the pipe. So there is some definite other things that are starting to take a role in this overall issue.
So, in other words, we can't really do that much, because we don't want to mess anything up for them, for now, for what's going on, until we hear more from...
It, it might be them, it might be us.
Well, I know, but we got to find, we got to wait, that's what you're saying, we got to wait.
Yeah, I just...
But Mel's point is, he needs to get hold of VLTC and find out why they're dragging their feet. They may be dragging their feet to find out what the outcome of, you know, this whole engineering process is, who did what, did they do it? So maybe that's part of the...
I know, did you ever hear from anybody from FEMA, Jeff?
Oh, FEMA, yeah, we had, we had filed a claim with a 211 number, I think it was at the time, and FEMA came the next day. They checked it out, they had another residence, I think, across the road, a couple houses up from us, who'd also filed the claim with them. Their impression, based on taking a look at the basement, taking a look at the area around there, and the description that we had of the events that occurred was that it was a city liability issue, it was, it sounded like the storm drain system didn't hold up, and that it didn't qualify for FEMA. Which I think is consistent to what they had told you when they spoke, I think, later that week, because there was a few other claims other than ours that were made.
Do we have, are other developments, are they also hooked up into storm drains?
Well, I mean, Sunset, basically the, you know, relative to stormwater permits, if you will, the city, from my knowledge, the city holds the permits for Crosby Farms, Sunset Drive, and Thomas Circle. I believe those are the only three that we, that we ended up with. Two of them, Sunset Drive and Thomas Circle, I think those were considered orphans, and the city actually received some money to pay for re-permitting, and there was some maintenance work involved with that one. Crosby Farm was not considered an orphan at the time. I was gone for 10 years, Jeff, so there's some things that occurred when I wasn't there, and I, and that was one of the things that occurred while I wasn't manager, and, but I do, I know, I'm quite sure, in light of the fact that Jim Pease, based on Jim Pease, obviously, the city did, is the holder of that permit. So we are required to, you know, do the annual inspections, do any re-permitting, any engineering...
But do you know if the houses are hooked into those?
Into what?
Into those storms.
In the other developments?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to say, so when you say get to the bottom of it, you're relying on the remote League of Cities and Towns to do their investigation, to do that, like, that's not something that the city's going to do independent of the insurance company?
We would work in concert with them, but I, what really, I, you know, when I provide these list of, you know, owners, potential people that are liable, I mean, I shouldn't get in the middle of that, because what I'm doing, I mean, the city has a relationship with our insurance, with VLCT Passive, so I shouldn't be going out there, you know, interviewing parties that VLCT Passive may be putting on notice, it just isn't appropriate to me. So, but that's not to say that, you know, that, you know, we wouldn't all be communicating at some point here, but, you know, to me, I really would have thought that this would have gone on much quicker. For instance, when, when, when the initial email came in from Jeff, I sent that to the League, I really would have thought that the League would have said, okay, who are the parties? Let me get a copy of the plans, you know, who are the parties? And that, to my knowledge, hasn't occurred. And, and that's what's, you know, you know, it's been since, you know, Jeff's initial email, until my letter, you know, you know, your letter of August 3rd, and my letter of August 7th or 8th, or whatever, to them, all right? And, you know, here it is, August 23rd, and I haven't got a call either, you know? Now, you know, if the League, if the League, in defense of, some defense of the League, if the League is relying on third-party contractors to adjust claims, all right, I understand that, I, you know, I was a part of that organization. However, all right, you still, I don't care, you still don't leave the city of Virgin's, the Tartt family, and anybody else involved with this thing in the dark. That's just not the way it should, should be handled. You know, the investigation should be done, the resources should be put forth to figure out who's liable, and then once they can figure out the liability, then we can figure out corrective measures and who's going to pay for them.
In terms of corrective measures, are you relying on the insurance company for that, or would that be done after their liability decision is made?
I want to speculate on something. Let's say that Lance Llewellyn, you know, gets involved with this and finds out that, that he erred. Let's say that he looked at this thing and concludes that he should have been planning on an 80-acre storm shed, and he only planned on 45, all right? He has, he has professional liability insurance, and so therefore he would be putting his insurance carrier on notice, all right? And that's how, you know, that's how remedies happen, all right? The problem is, is that they don't happen real quickly. And, and the problem, I mean, I, you know, obviously, both of the events that occurred were 10-year events, 15-year events, 30-year events, you know, about how much rain fell within a 24-hour period. And, you know, obviously, if, you know, it's my understanding that for 18 years, your property has never had a problem. Okay? And so obviously, you know, one of the things that we initially thought was like, is there a, is there three basketballs in some line somewhere that's not allowing the flow to come out? And that's the investigation that Jim did with, with Jim Larrel and Carol LaCanna, to go out there and take a look at these detention ponds and see if there isn't some physical obstruction that called that. And that, that wasn't the case, you know? It's, I don't know if I feel good or bad about that, but that wasn't the case. We couldn't point to a physical obstruction, and so therefore we end up pointing on, people end up pointing on design.
So, go forward from here, would be, you're going to contact VLTC, and when do you think you may be able to do that?
I'll call them tomorrow, yeah, just call them, yeah.
Okay? And I think you'll...
Jeff, Jeff and I communicate all the time, literally, you know? You know, one of the things that I told Jeff right, right from the gate, when he called me, I told him, I said, Jeff, listen, I take none of this stuff personally, and, you know, you put something together, I'm going to forward to our carrier, I really don't know how the liability goes, so, I mean, there's, I mean, this, these things aren't fun, I mean, this has not been fun for the Tarts, you know, and it's not just the damages, I mean, you know, you have the pictures, you know, this is, this has not been pleasant, all right? And we need to, you know, figure this thing out. You know, the Tarts are not the only property that, that were affected by these, by these two events, as Jeff mentioned, you know, there's, you know, been, there's been six or eight that have been affected by, with stormwater backups.
Any other questions, comments?
I think that was it, just wanted to know what could or would be done, and sort of a time frame.
All right, well, Mel will be in touch and try to keep you well apprised of what's happening, and if you hear something, if you get a contact from an adjuster, could you let Mel know that something is happening on the other end, please? Okay? Very good. Thank you. Warrants, have been all signed?
Yep.
We have enough signatures on there. Approval of minutes, of course, I lose those right now. Last city council's meeting dated July 26, 2011, I'd asked for a motion. Second? Law made a motion, Randy seconded. Any omissions, corrections, or errors? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Budget review?
You, you have two budget reports, since you got none last time we met. The first budget report in your packet had a cover sheet, which you've seen before in the past, which is my attempt to project a fund balance, and, you know, Joan and I have done a lot of work getting our grants all to balance. Obviously, some of our projects are grant-related, and even though the, a grant reimbursement didn't show up on June 30th, we end up booking it as a grants receivable, so that those, the expense and the revenues match when you add a receivable. And as you can see here, based on this sheet here, pre-delinquent tax calculations, end up with a fund balance of $180,724.27, and that's, that's the good news. Let me, let me just give you what potentially is the bad news. The bad news is, is August 31st, 2010, we ended the year with about $14,000 worth of delinquent taxes, and with interest and penalty, it equaled about $16,000. So 60 days into, into the current fiscal year, we were able to reduce our delinquent taxes from around $41,000 down to, with interest and penalty, of $16,000. As of, as of 10 of 7, when I ran this, ran this report today, our delinquent taxes with interest and penalty is $61,735. So basically, if between today and July 31st, if I collect nothing in the form of delinquent taxes, that's an increase in delinquent taxes of some $46,000. And obviously, if that's what occurs on August 31st, therefore we have to deduct $46,000 from this fund balance, because we're losing ground by that amount of money in, in delinquent taxes. So that, you take the $180,724, and you subtract $46,000, that should get you to $134,000, which obviously is above the $125,000 that we used as our cash carryover, but, you know, there's, that leaves us with very little cushion compared to last year, because the year before, we ended the year with $229,000 fund balance, and we used 125 of it for, as of that carryover, and kept the tax rate the same. So, you know, it really is imperative that, that I get that number down, but it needs to be down 60 days into the fiscal year, all right? So, so anyway, we got, I would not have liked to have seen, I knew that the, I knew that the $16,000 was a pretty remarkable number, and I knew it was going to go up, because it's, it's really, when you bill out $3 million and only have that, that amount left, that's, you know, pretty impressive of our, of our folks out there. But I really didn't think that we would, it would go up quite that much. You know, I would have thought that maybe it would have doubled, but I didn't think that it would increase fourfold, and that's what it did. So, that's the, that's the bad news. So anyway, as you can see, the, you know, overall, the expenses, we did end up going over budget because of police and public works. You know, one of the things that, that, you know, Joan and I have to work on are journal entries, like any, any bill that came in in July, or the first part of August, that was referent, that was involved, a purchase that actually occurred in June, or service period in June, we have to book that to the prior year. And so when we originally thought that the expenses were going to be a little bit below budget, they actually ended up being over budget by $10,000. You know, one of the biggest bills that comes in for us in, in July is our power bill, you know, so when we pay Greenmount Power $10,000 in July, it's, it's really June's usage. So that's what adjusted that. But as you can see over to the left, the revenue stream is, is very good. You know, we, we ended up with almost $87,000 in revenues beyond our original budget, which obviously resulted in, in much of that $180,000 cash carryover. So that's that one. The other budget report you have is obviously very early in the, in the year. The budget report that we sent to you didn't include any payroll, any, the payroll that Joan processed today, and any bills that had to be, had to be paid today. So it's really, obviously, here we are in August, two months into the fiscal year, where it's really too early to, you know, claim victory or defeat. So, so I really don't have any, anything, I really don't have any real news as it relates to the current budget, it'll start to take shape once, once we get through... It'll start to take shape once, uh, once we get through, uh, the first quarter. They'll end up with, uh, with a little more meaning there.
Uh, does anybody have any questions of Mel on this present or current budget?
This little one here?
The, the one that says current year.
Those are yours, Ziggy.
Current, okay. Previous and then current, alright.
Any questions on the current?
No, we don't.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the committee reports and goals. Anything, uh, from committees? Nothing from committees?
I'm slipping, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I mean, I met with Kevin Ernie, we went to the Rotary to kind of assess interest in, uh, possibility of a municipal boathouse, looking at some options for that, kind of assess the interest from the business community.
Really? That'd be great.
Kevin's been doing a lot of, like, work on that, so it's been really kind of some interesting stuff.
Now I know why, the, that makes sense now of the emails. He's been picking my brain, and I don't interrogate people, but he, uh...
Great Clark's friends?
No, no, he was just kinda wondering about the balance in this fund and the balance in that fund. I, you know, people ask me questions, I just answer the questions, you know? I don't say, "Well, what do you want me to know that for?" So now I know why, why he was, uh, you know, what he was working on, and that's good. Okay.
And I did get, I remember last meeting, I asked you about what was going on with the boat down there, and you did get, you did email, and you...
Yes, as a matter of fact, you know, and I was gonna grab the sign, Ziggy, I, uh, we talked about me grabbing the sign, and, you know, one of the things that, and Ziggy brought this up, and, and I had to admit to you that I'd never seen the sign, so I, so after the meeting, I, I went down to the Public Works Garage, and I wanted to look at this sign, to say like, "What's Ziggy talking about?" Well, anyway, what I found is, uh, some signs that, uh, that were made that said, you know, "Reserve for cruise boat," alright? And then there was a box on the bottom, and inside of the box was, you know, I'm gonna say, "Too much information." It was accurate information, but it said, you know, like, Thursday, four-thirty, uh, July twenty-second to Friday, uh, seven AM to, you know, Aga, you know, July such and such, you know, so you gotta, you got all this information in a box, it's about this big, and that, you know, so then I could see what Ziggy was talking about, was saying, you know, the boater, a boater comes up, and they see this sign that says cruise, reserve for cruise boat. You can't read, you can't read what's in the box, that they were turning around and leaving, alright? So I went, and so, in looking at the sign, I, uh, you know, quizzed my guys down there, saying, "Listen, how does this work? Tell me, what goes on here?" You know, and, and, uh, and I had talked to Captain, there's not Captain Walker, there's another captain in the boat, and, and...
Okay.
One of the things that, you know, obviously, when the city council approved the restrict, approved the schedule, if you will, of when it's restricted, you know, I sent an email to Mike Shea, and that word gets out to them. But one of the things that, that I wanted to make sure of is that sometimes they don't have any patrons on their boat, nobody has reserved a ticket or whatever to, to go on a trip, and therefore, the boat doesn't run. And so obviously, the Public Works Crew, they just can't go by the schedule, because it's very possible that the boat is not running. So what we've told the Moonlight Lady is that they must call within twenty-four hours of the time that they need it reserved, to indeed confirm that that boat is going to be on the water, and it's going to be making it to Virgens. And once we know that, the signs, and I had the signs, uh, the bottom part redone, so it doesn't have all of this Thursday, three-thirties, July, whatever, it says today, four o'clock, okay? And that way, when they, when they know the boat is coming around four o'clock, the sign, the three signs are put down there, alright? And, and it basically is saying two things. It's telling the boaters that are currently there, if there are some there, that they need to leave by four. And if and when they leave, the sign is sitting there, so that any boater that's coming to the dock prior to the Moonlight Lady showing up can now see what the sign is saying. So like, for instance, let's say that, let's say that we put that sign out at, you know, we usually put it the, I don't know if they put it out the end of the day, or the, or the morning, but let's say they put it out bright and early. Let's say they go and they put it out there at seven o'clock in the morning, that says, "Reserve for cruise boat, boat today, four PM," alright? So let's say the, the boaters that are, that are, they're at the dock, they know they gotta leave. And let's say they leave at nine o'clock in the morning, and off they go, and now the dock is open, and let's say another boat comes down at nine-thirty, and they see that sign, and let's say that the only space that is available down there is that area that's reserved for the Moonlight Lady. What they can do is pull up to the dock, you know? Dock, come uptown, buy supplies and whatever, but they know that they gotta leave by four o'clock. They aren't going to be able to stay, they aren't gonna be able to stay overnight, you know, unless some other space down there frees up. So, uh, you know, I think that, uh, thanks, Zig, for pointing that out to me, and I think that we've got certainly a much clearer message to, to boaters that are already here, or boaters that are, that are coming here.
Sorry? How about goals? Anybody wanna talk about any of their goals? Anything standing out, are they coming along, or...
Michael, it was related to the Rec Committee, I, you know, I think we had a lot of work done this year, a really good start, a good foundation on, uh, kinda what, what our mission was designed to be. So, I'm really pleased with how it's worked so far, and I, I hope that, I hope that everyone else is, 'cause we, I'm happy with the report that we came up with, and I'm looking forward to continuing that.
Good.
Next year.
Super. Okay, next, there's, Randy, you got something?
Oh, mine were doing fine until recently, uh, lost a little bit of steam, but hoping within the next month or two to be able to get back on track with my goals. We've been doing well with partnership and the farmers market.
Northland Job Corps, Mel will mention something in a minute, that will help tie things together on Northland, so we won't go there at, at this point.
Right.
Okay? Um, alright, um, no, no public, unless Andy has anything he wants to comment on? Always looking, rumors are that they're gonna float, float that, uh, that other part of the bridge this week. They're saying, they're saying Wednesday...
Thursday, I heard.
Thursday, thunderstorm coming in Thursday afternoon. That won't, that won't happen if they do.
I heard, I thought it was tomorrow.
Well, there's a whole bunch of things...
We heard Thursday.
Yeah.
But if they start early, who knows?
Yep. Well, it'll, it'll be on somebody's radar, and it'll go out fast, hopefully. It's gonna take them twelve hours to do it, they say, so maybe somebody'll get to see it. Okay, enough about the Champlain Bridge, we'll be back to that in a minute. Um, we'll go right into old business. Request for, uh, reduction now to out-of-town sewer, Mel's tabling that until October?
Yeah, I, uh, as, you know, was agreed, that I would make sure that I would come back with a recommendation to the city council in advance of Joan doing the, uh, the billing that will occur on October sixteenth. I, I will tell you that the, the League has been, League of Cities and Towns has been helping me out. Karen Horn, who's the Assistant Executive Director, put a questionnaire out, uh, for me to other managers and administrators that own sewer plants, gathering some information on, uh, on out-of-district rates for both water and sewer. I could tell you, they're all over the map. Had a little conversation with Diane from Swanton Village, it's, it's a little weird the way they do things. Swanton Village is, is, uh, Swanton Village has the water system, Swanton Village has the sewer system, and in both instances, water and sewer extends out to town residents. Relative to water, if you're in the town, you pay exactly double what you would pay if you're in the village. Relative to sewer, if you're outside of the, the village, you actually pay about two percent less than if you're inside the village. So, uh, I don't totally understand, uh, you know, the logic behind these things. So, you know, I really, to be very honest with you, I really wish that there was a law that said that out-of-district rates shall not exceed a hundred and twenty percent of, of in-district, some law that just was there, 'cause I tell you, you know, the water district charge is forty percent, uh, when you do the math, we're charging forty-two or forty-three. Swanton's charging double of water, nothing for sewer. Uh, some towns, uh, there is absolutely no difference between the two. Uh, but to me, one of the, one of the things that, that we certainly need to pay attention to, and that is, you know, whether or not general fund employees are, uh, are doing sewer work, and, and it's not being reflected in the transfer of money that we, we do. Again, we, we move seventy thousand dollars a year from the sewer fund to the general fund to compensate the general fund, which is obviously gets its money from Virgens taxpayers, for any work that I do that's sewer-related, Joan does, Leslie does, Melissa does, the Public Works Department do, any work that they do. Uh, if, if the seventy thousand dollars covers all of the expense, then maybe there's an argument there shouldn't, that there shouldn't be, uh, an, uh, a surcharge, if you will, on out-of-district. But if it's not covering all of it, either that should move, or there needs to be a surcharge, because the Waltham and Ferrisburg properties that are connected to the sewer system are not paying any property taxes to Virgens. So, I just wanted to give you, to freshen my mind, Mike, so I wanted to just let you know what I'm, what I'm working on, and, uh, and we'll come back to you with some kind of recommendation. I, I, uh, I'm such a math guy, I, I, I wish things were just mathematical, and then you could just run a calculation and send the bill. And, uh, unfortunately, when you, when you look at, you know, when you look at ourselves, and look at the Virgens Pan Water District, and look at other towns, I don't get it. I, uh, it, it's, it's, it's almost like, it's either two answers. One is, we've always done it that way, I love that answer. Uh, the other one is, because we can. And I love that answer, too. So, like I say, I, I, one of the things that I'm gonna do is for you all, is, this won't come to any surprise to you, my recommendation will be very much driven by math. You know, I, I think that there should be a mathematical calculation that justifies whatever the, uh, whatever delta there is between in-district and out-of-district. To me, it should be a mathematical exercise, and not about because we can. Because, because we can, uh, could be regarded as taking advantage of out-of-district people, and I, that's not where my head's at. I think that, you know, we should charge what we charge, because it's, it's calculated, and that's the right, and that's the right thing that we should be charging.
Alrighty, um, item number seven, City Manager's Report.
Uh, I'm gonna report on four things. Mike mentioned about, uh, Alutech. If you remember, many months ago, uh, it must've been around last July, because that's when the contract changed from ResCare to Alutech, and, uh, ResCare and Alutech are, are affiliated corporations, if you will, but the current contractor is Alutech. Uh, Tony Stannings, uh, who you've met on, on more than one occasion, uh, he terminated employment with Alutech on August eighth. Uh, I got a call from Bob Sabacheck, who was, who joined Tony at one of the meetings here last, last summer to announce that, uh, that there, there had been a change in contractor, but that change in contractor was, was between two affiliated companies. So, uh, uh, so anyway, Bob gave, Bob gave me that call. Uh, I also have spoke to the Regional Job Corps Director, I think that's what his title is, for the United States Department of Labor, who is Joe Samansky, had a conversation with him, and one of the things encouraged him that when, either when he's in town, or somebody from the, the Department of Labor's offices in, in town, that they come to City Hall, and, you know, check in with me, uh, possibly see the mayor, see the Chief of Police, you know, uh, you know, see some city officials when they're here, so that the, so that, so that we have both representatives of the contractor and representative from the government remembering that, that that campus is leased from the state of Vermont to the federal government. And the federal government has some oversight, obviously, for the operations of these, and I think it's important that we, we know, know the people. So that was a good conversation. And one of the things that, that Joe assured me of is that, is that I would get a call within twenty-four hours, you know, given the fact that Tony, uh, you know, had terminated employment with Alutech, Joe assured me that within twenty-four hours, I would get a call from Bob Sabacheck with Alutech, and Bob did call me. And, uh, he let me know that, uh, that there is a interim Center Director, his name is Jim Linde. And so today, we had a meeting in my office, I can't remember all these people's last, no joke, no, Mike's got them. So, the folks that were, uh, at the meeting, uh, you know, Mike and I, along with Jim Linde, the interim, he's the interim Center, Center Director, uh, the Director of Operations, Dave Marrenville, and, uh, and Bob Sabacheck. And I, I can tell you, uh, uh, these folks have been in this business a long time, I think that's one thing we learned. I mean, you know, these guys have combined over a hundred years of service in Job Corps, so, you know, they know it, it's, it's amazing, you know? They know all the rules and regs and responsibilities and whatever, it was really, uh, an educational meeting for me, for me, Mike. Uh, also, one of the things that I did is, you know, because, you know, the lease from the state of Vermont to the United States Department of Labor does terminate on June, unless renewed, terminates June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, uh, I sent an email to, uh, to Commissioner Michael Bahowski a week or so ago, and, uh, I'm gonna say that he's assigned, if you will, that lease to, uh, a gentleman with the state by the name of Bill Laffier, Laffarrier. And I invited, uh, I invited Bill to this meeting as well. I, it, it is a little strange, you know, you got, you know, we don't necessarily invite landlords to, to meetings, but, you know, I really feel that this is different. I, even though the state of Vermont owns the facility, and they're the landlord, to me, we all, we all need to be in the same room, you know, talking about, uh, you know, the Northlands operation, renewed leases, you know, there, from time to time, there's been some discussion about the federal government purchasing the facility, and, uh, you know, as Mike talks about it, you know, we need to be at the table, we need to be, we shouldn't, uh, learn about these kinds of things after the, after the fact. And I, I will tell you that, in listening to the guys from Alutech, and again, they're contractors, and when they, they bid on these pro, they bid on these programs, they end up with a two-year contract with three one-year renewals, and obviously, uh, when they talk about budget, uh, federal budgets, uh, constraint, and whether or not centers need to, uh, close or not, you know, obviously, uh, when the federal government is looking at these things, they look at it on a per pupil cost. You know, what is it costing to run the Vermont Center? What is it costing to run the Kentucky Center? You know, what is it costing? And so, Vermont's an expensive place to be in, and, and, uh, one of the things, you know, Tony had talked about this before, one of the reasons why this is an expensive center is because it has so many buildings. And when you have so many buildings, it takes a lot of resident assistance to, to, uh, be stationed in each of these buildings, and so, and, and the buildings are old and inefficient. And so, they really would like to, to, as Tony has said before, they, you know, there really is some return on investment in building a large dormitory over there, or two large dormitories. To, number one, it would be much more efficient, you know, from utilities, but also would help them in, in staffing to do. The problem is, is that when, uh, you know, when the United States Department of Labor is a tenant, alright, I mean, tenants don't spend seven million dollars on, on, uh, on new dorms. You know, contractors, you know, they're, you know, I don't wanna say they're here today, gone tomorrow, but, you know, they're a contractor. They bid on a project, and they know the campus, and they do it. So it's not like Alutech is gonna build a building over there. So, I think there's, there's some discussion going on, uh, consideration to look at this campus, and if it's gonna be, if Vermont is going to host a, a Northlands campus for, you know, it's been there since nineteen seventy-eight, alright? So it's been there for almost thirty-five years, and if it's gonna be there for thirty-five more, you know, they should look at it, and, and see, you know, you know, should, should there be an investment in this campus, because, because the United States Department of Labor is going to, going to need to continue to operate a center in, in Northland. So, so anyway, I, it was a good meeting, I, I felt, Mike, um, you know, uh, one of the things that we, that we've done, uh, and need to continue doing, is to, is to meet with them, period. I know Randy, Randy's, uh, been there, Mike, Kitty Oxon, the, the group that we've got together to, to, uh, you know, keep on, on top of what's happening over there, both short, short range and long range.
We, we're gonna let Jim get his, uh, feet wet a little bit, 'cause he's made, making a few changes up there. Uh, they got some, uh, new training that... Uh, they got some, uh, new training that they wanna do, both at a, uh, uh, staff level and, uh, student level, that they wanna get out, and some different handbooks that they have. So we really wanna give Jim a little bit of time to settle in, get his, set, settle in, then we'll, we'll start reaching out to, uh, start having some more meetings, uh, and see how the progress is going, so.
Uh, three other things. Quickly, uh, Joan and I forgot to report on this at the last meeting, but, uh, on July twenty-fifth, when we met here last, we actually had a, a meeting in, we had a meeting before the meeting. Uh, we, uh, held a meeting. Ziggy was there, and Randy, Randy attended as well. We had a meeting of the Ray Davison Capital Equipment Fund. You know, they're supposed to have a, a meeting every May. We, we held it in July, and, uh, that fund, obviously, we, we met upstairs, 'cause we wanted to see the new truck, you know, the, uh, the new utility truck up there, uh, that was acquired with the, the twenty-six thousand dollar allocation. And, uh, one of the things, Joan, in, in managing that money, you know, she needs to, unless told, she needs to kinda guess, you know, whether or not somebody wants to do something. So we had, you know, sixteen or seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, I think it was, Joan. All right, uh, that was in that account. And so we had, uh, Jim told us that the, that the officers had met, and said that there was no equipment needs for the next year, that they would look to the Ray Davison Fund, uh, to fund. And so therefore Joan has invested that, uh, seventeen thousand dollars in cash in a, in a, in a CD. The other thing I wanna just quickly report on is, uh, I do plan on receiving a, uh, a loan application to the revolving loan fund, and so, I wanna hold at least one, if not two, meetings of that group, uh, in, uh, in September. And I've lost track of which one of you is the designee. You wanna say? Okay. All right, so anyway, September sometime. I gotta find out what, what works best for folks from a time, but I need to do something to that. And lastly, uh, I, I, I raced a, a little bit before I came down here, 'cause I was anxious to input the, the final numbers on the pool. You know, the pool closed on Saturday. Joan processed payroll today. We paid some bills here today, and closed the pool. And what I, uh, have come up with is, I think we ended up with a fund balance of around sixty-five hundred dollars, something like that, but I, uh, I, uh, I, I was racing a little bit. So not only did we replace the pump, all right, with, uh, that cost sixty-five hundred dollars, we still ended the year with a projected fund balance of around sixty-five hundred dollars, which actually could grow to eighty-five hundred if we, if we do receive continued donations from the Fishman family. So that's the good news. The, uh, the not-so-good news is Roland says that the diving boards need to be replaced, all right? So, uh, you know, one of the things that I'm learning about the swimming pool, just as soon as we think that we're in great shape, you know, we gotta buy a diving board, gotta buy a pump, you know. So, you know, one of the things, Joe, now, and, you know, you learn these, you learn these things, you know, after you do it, it's, uh, you know, it, I'm glad that we got five thousand dollars. I'd hate to be sitting here telling you we're five in the, five in the hole. But, you know, one of the things is that it's clear to me is that, uh, there are, just like the sewer plant or whatever, there's expenses that occur with the pool that don't occur every year. And so therefore, what we really should be doing in that budget is allocating X, all right? And think about things like, okay, we have a pump, they last for thirty years. We have diving boards, they last for five years. We have a roof, it lasts for twenty years. You just do a little math, you do a little math problem, and you say, you know what? We need to set four thousand dollars a year for capital, because I can tell you, I didn't budget sixty-five hundred for the pump. And you, you wonder why that budget's, uh, that line items up. Well, we didn't budget diving boards. I didn't budget for diving boards. So, I want that kind of stuff to settle down, you know. I, I, I can't budget fifteen hundred and spend four thousand dollars all the time. We should be planning for it. So, uh, so I guess what I'm, what I'm telling you is, is when I put my budget together for the two thousand and twelve season, it'll have, it'll have, uh, a line item in there that'll be allocated over into a, a capital, some kind of a capital fund, so that we accumulate some dollars, so that when the year comes, when you need to replace the diving boards, or, or do the roof, you have that money, have that money sitting there. And so that budget stays, uh, stays current. So, you know, I, I, I don't know what else is left, you know, probably lifeguard chairs, you know. I mean, I, I, I don't know, but it's, uh, we learn. They should be, yeah. So anyway, it's, it's, uh, you know, that, uh, is going well, and, uh, don't tell Roland's wife. Uh, I know we're on film here, but I really think that Roland likes, likes, uh, be involved with that pool. I really, I really do. He, uh, oh, yeah, and, uh, you know, I, I tell him that he can stay as long as he wants. I mean, it's just, he comes every day with the money, and, you know, he might tell a story or two, but he doesn't take up that much of our time. He's, uh, you know, I, uh, you know, so I think as long as he, he feels that he can, you know, handle, handle the job, uh, the physical, 'cause there is some physical part of, of this job, uh, that he, uh, that, that is involved here, and, but I think if he feels that he can meet the, the, the demand, uh, you know, he'll stay on, and, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not, not anxious to have him leave. It's, uh, you know, he provides all that history, and he knows how everything runs, and he's got it down to, uh, science as to what needs to happen at the end of the year, and at the beginning of the year, and throughout the year. I mean, it's, it's pretty, he's, uh, he's proud of that pool, too. I think that has something to do with it. It, uh, he takes a lot of pride in that pool, it's, it's like he does with the, uh, with the athletic field, so. So that's all I had, Michael.
Good. Thank you. Uh, new business, military personnel penalty and interest exemption. Mel.
Uh, I don't know if Joan found this statute. I, I think she might have, or stumbled on it, or whatever, but when we run across things like this, like for instance, if there's, if there's a statute that allows the, the legislative body or the voters to act on something, you know, we've, we feel that we should be bringing these things to your attention. And so they're really your considerations, they're not ours. And, uh, you must have found this one, Joan, right? Or, I don't know how we stumbled on this, but...
I think we were looking, 'cause we were doing some tax sales, and we thought, we read, or I thought I read something about, you can't, if they're military personnel or something, on active duty. And that's when I ran into this one. It's like, oh.
And it has, you know, it has come up before, where, you know, uh, where folks are in Afghanistan, and, you know, they aren't getting their mail, and, and there isn't, if, if, if there's some single guy, and he's in Afghanistan, and not getting his mail, I can tell you he's going delinquent, unless he's left his checkbook with a, you know, with a guardian or something. So it does, it does happen. You know, one of the things that's, you know, not crystal clear in that law, it does say taxes. Do you, do you think, Joan, that that would apply to sewer as well? Do you think that, that, uh, that the city council is, I mean, 'cause I think the spirit of it is, is they don't, they, they aren't here. They're gone.
Right. So they're not, it's hard for them to make a deadline, you know, especially like mail, you know. You, you couldn't get a, a bill to them and get your money back in thirty days.
So I don't think it's a stretch, I don't think it's a stretch to include, uh, sewer as well as taxes for somebody who's on, uh, active leave in the military. So it would be our recommendation to, uh, that the council approve the, uh, the military personal penalty and interest exemption on, uh, on property taxes and sewer assessments.
I think Randy got it up first. I think Ziggy will second it. Open for discussion.
If we're doing this, can we bring something like this down to the water district and make sure they're doing the same thing? A copy of the rules, nothing, 'cause I don't...
We can show it to them. I, I don't know, uh, yeah. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not sure, it, it, you know, it might apply to them, but we'll let them do their own research. But we'll, I'll share that with John, John and Maria, sure.
For us, it's gonna be to include taxes and sewer.
That's what the mo, that's what the motion.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, uh, waiver of penalty for inquirky declaring homestead. Mel.
Last month, uh, we included in your packet a two-page memo relative to, uh, waivers, uh, on late filing homesteads, or people, people have, uh, basically what happened is, is that, you remember, when this whole homestead declaration law was passed, everybody was required to file their declaration on an annual basis. That was the rule. And if you didn't file on an annual basis, then you were subject to a statutory, a statutory interest or penalty charge. There was no, the, the way the law was written, if you filed late, you got penalized. It's just that simple, okay? And what ended up happening for, this is the first year of this, right? You know, this is the first year where the legislature said that you do not have to file your homestead declaration every year. You only have to file a homestead declaration if you bought a house prior to April one. That's one reason. Or, let's say, if you, uh, you had a homestead declaration and you used to rent thirty percent of your house to, uh, to somebody, and then the following year, in the current year, you're renting thirty-five. If there's a change in your percentage, you have to file an updated, uh, HS one thirty-one. But if, if, if nothing changed, you don't have to file. So, uh, we do on occasion deal with late filers. I mean, if somebody buys a piece of property that was not a homestead, and let's say they bought it in March, and it was not a homestead, and if they didn't file by, by, uh, April fifteen, then, you know, they, they should've, because that's, that's what the, that's what the law is. The, the one that we, the one that we, uh, have some, some sympathy for is when somebody bought a single family, they bought a single-family dwelling that was a homestead, declared a homestead, but the person who bought it had no intentions of living there. They were going to rent it to someone else. And the law requires that if you own a homestead and sell your property, you're required within thirty days of the transaction to undeclare your property, all right? The problem is, is that if you, if you, if a property owner doesn't undeclare, the new owner gets the penalty. And Joan and I feel that certainly for the first year, that's unfair. It's unfair for the new owner to be penalized for something that the prior owner failed to do within thirty days. So, uh, our recommendation is, I outlined in my cover memo under, under eight B, that the penalty should, uh, be waived for the first year following the sale, when someone buys a property that has been declared, been a declared homestead, and the prior owner fails to submit a notice to withdraw, uh, to the tax department as required by law. We would wa, we would waive the three percent penalty, right, Joan? It's, it's a three percent penalty.
Ziggy made the motion. Lo made the second. Open for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um, some, I got many announcements. First one is that, uh, the Champlain Bridge celebration has been moved to May nineteenth and twenty, two thousand and twelve. I attended a, a meeting last Monday night, and they're wondering if the city would be interested in sponsoring a float for the parade. The city had one in the previous celebration. So, um, don't know if the council wants to think that over, like, bring it back to the table at the next meetings, but I, and, and if there's any citizens that are listening that want to, uh, excuse the pun, but jump on the bandwagon, uh, you know, we could start doing something, but start planning it now. And, uh, if you design it right, then you can put it in the Memorial Day Parade, which is the weekend after. So, food for thought. Um, just to let everybody know, the next Hot and Forest meeting will be September first, two thousand and eleven, seven P M. Joan, can you mark the calendar? I would like the fire station. It's a Thursday night.
September first.
September first. Uh, Hot and Forest. We're having some people drop out, uh, due to involvement with children and whatnot. We've got some more new faces, but we're always looking for lots of new faces. It's a, it's a big undertaking to, uh, take on and pull this off. Lot of fun, though. I've mentioned in the past that the historic pictures of Virgin's can be viewed. Uh, I have actually got the internet location in the, that is C D I dot U V M dot E D U. And you just, once you open that up, uh, I think it's the second from the left, there's a group of pictures. Uh, there's seven hundred and eighty-four photos. I'll give that back to you again. It is C D I dot U V M dot E D U. And once you get into those photos, it, they're, on the bottom of them, uh, you are allowed to go in, if you know something about the history or that particular picture, you're allowed to put footnotes in on those pictures. And people, they're really looking for whatever they can get for information. Uh, they would really appreciate that. Other things that are happening, Saturday, of course, we celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of Virgin's Day. It's thirty-plus. But this has been going thirty years straight. Uh, there will be some cake, and of course, the barbecue. And I forgot to sign up for tickets, Joan, so.
I hope you do.
You're a very kind person. Be busy today. So please turn out, be seen, enjoy the day. Uh, we're, we've got plans to hold off the, uh, the big storm until Sunday. At least, that's what your weatherman's saying. Um, just so that you hear about what's happening. Before Tony left, he put some, some wheels in motion, and it's pretty much underway. It's gotta go through a few other little things, but, uh, the state of Vermont, uh, Northland Job Corps, and Greenmount Power are working, uh, to install a wind tower over on Job Corps property. It'll be on the sixty-six acres, right, Mel? So, and what, how that works is ninety percent of the power, well, a hundred percent of the power goes back to the grid, but Northland will get ten percent credit on their bill. So, so if you hear anything, um, or you wanna discuss that at a further date, you know, by all means, give Mel or myself a call, and we can talk more about that. I have been approached about a program called Extra Mile America. What they're looking for is people that do that extra things, volunteers, and I have information, if anybody would like to submit their name, or set some, submit somebody's names. They're asking us, the city, to make a proclamation on, uh, November first this year as the, the official Extra Mile Day. Um, so I'm going to be sending them some requesting information as far as the proclamation, uh, but, uh, just, that's a piece of information for you. Like? I'm partly to fault for the gentleman not getting this, but I, so I, I, I guess I'll take some of the blame, but of course. Carol O'Connor, over thirty years, thirty-three years, um, worked for the city of Virgin's. We wanted to do something for him, such as a little barbecue, whatnot, and he won't let us do anything. So, um, Mel and I are going to get together some afternoon and pin him down, and...
He's pretty big, though, Mike. I, I need, I need big more than you and me.
Well, we'll bring, we'll bring Laro in the loader if we need to. So that's a copy of that, that he will be presented. And thank you, Carol, for all your service to our fine city. I know that I've been down in the middle of the night doing some real nasty storms, and those guys are hammering away all, all hours of the night and mornings. Um, I gave everyone a copy of the city voice. It should be online, uh, sometime tomorrow, if not before. My wife may have already beat me to the punch. Uh, but these will actually hit the streets and be left in the versions tomorrow, and thanks to Joan. may have already beat me to the punch. Uh, but these will actually hit the streets and be left in immersion tomorrow and thanks to Joan uh, or her staff. I'm not sure which, or who's gonna do that, but I do appreciate it. So that's hitting the streets. Um, and the last things, the, a couple of things I need to mention is um, Regent's Fire Department uh, will be having some award celebrations in September. Uh, but there's one particular person that needs uh, mentioning and that's Mike Collet. He celebrates um, fifty years of service with the Regent's Fire Service this year. So, that's quite an accomplishment. Um, the, the other thing, excuse me, is they took some awards and the, the trophies are in the case, um, at uh, the convention which was held down in Middlebury at the college this year. So, um, that's all I have. Mo, the honors?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Randy?
Second.
And made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Thank you.
While I have you all here, um, chicken dinners, then I'll holler you out.